Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 8, 2023 New Bern Board of Alderman Meeting. The prayer tonight is going to be coordinated by Alderman Best.
Can you all please take a moment for prayer? Heavenly Father, I come to you once again, thanking you for giving us to us a beautiful day. Lord, I ask that as we city officials conduct the business of this city tonight, that you touch our mind and our heart, and as we make the decisions that will affect our citizens, let us be mindful that, Heavenly Father, we are doing your work, your will, for your people. Lord, I just want to thank you for giving me an opportunity to serve your people, the citizens of this city. Amen?
Amen.
Amen. If you would please stand while we pledge allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, if you would, please call the rule.
Alderman Creel?
Here.
Alderman Royal?
Here.
Alderman Astor?
Here.
Mayor Odom?
Here.
Alderman Kenzie? Alderman Best?
Present.
Alderman Brinson?
Here.
Board, before we move on to approving the agenda, the city manager has some comments he'd like to make.
Yes, at this time, I'd like to ask Chief Gallagher to come up and give an update on an incident that occurred in the past week.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Mayor, Board, although I'm facing this direction, I hope all of my comments are understood that I'm speaking to everybody in this room and to everybody that is watching on social media. Over the past eight days, the New Bern Police Department has been reviewing all relevant video and interviewing staff pertaining to an incident that occurred on Sunday, July 30, 2023. Before I proceed, it is important to make the point that we do not wish to minimize the feelings of anyone involved. A 10-year-old autistic child was handcuffed and transported to a local hospital. This occurred following a violent outburst in the New Bern Mall parking lot that resulted from a triggered event inside the facility. The events surrounding the child, his mother, and his family were traumatic for all. We respect their feelings and concerns during and after the event. I want to make a very important point. Our intention is to provide the family with our findings and information relating to the questions and concerns prior to any release to the public. I share today's comments to help give some clarity to the narrative that is circulating on social media. Out of respect for privacy, I will not give any names relating to the incident, although I am aware that much of this has already been circulated. On Sunday, July 30, a 911 call was received by New Bern Police Department Dispatch. The caller described that a 12- or 10-year-old child was repeatedly assaulting a young woman. The caller reported that the child is autistic. Later during the 911 call, dispatchers learned that the woman is the boy's mother. The first officer arrived on scene approximately three minutes after receiving the 911 call and witnessed a violent assault in progress in the front seat of a vehicle. Out of safety for the mother and the child, the officer separated the two and handcuffed the child. The child was not injured and was placed in the backseat of a nearby patrol car. At no time was any other force utilized during this incident. The mother was informed that her son was not arrested and no charges would be filed. The officer offered the mother the option of seeking an involuntary commitment from the Craven County magistrate and had the child evaluated by a doctor at a hospital. The mother elected to obtain the IVC paperwork. A separate officer escorted the mother to a magistrate's office while the child was transported to the hospital. On Monday, July 31, I, along with members of my executive team, spoke and met with members of the child's family to get an update on how the child was doing and to answer any questions or concerns they had. It is not the intention of anyone in the New Bern Police Department, from my office to the officers on the street, to deprive any person of their constitutional rights or their dignity. We are working with the city attorney to give family members an opportunity to view the body worn camera footage so they can see exactly what happened. We hope we can make this happen in a timely manner. That concludes my comments. Thank you for the opportunity.
Just a standard question. Chief, just out of curiosity, was the entire incident caught on video, on body cam and car cam?
Yes, the entire incident was captured on body worn camera footage, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Moving on to item number three. You've had an opportunity to review the agenda. What's the pleasure of the board?
Make motion to approve the agenda as is.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item number four, request and petition of citizens. Madam Clerk. First one is Sasha Strayhorn of 430 Cicero Riggs Road.
Good evening, everybody. Give them your name and your address and let them know you want me to help. My name is Sasha Strayhorn. Address is 450 Cicero Riggs Road in Coles, North Carolina. And she'll be speaking for me. My name is Jamisha Harris. I live at 222 Monterey Circle. I'm here tonight because I was asked by the family and my soul war, Ms. Strayhorn, in regards to the incident that happened. The first thing that I would like to point out is I appreciate you chief for coming up, but I feel like having this happen before she had the opportunity to say her part was gaslighting. The second thing is regardless of what's on this video, the person that called the police needs to be dealt with because this child is autistic, right? When we have incidents that happen, I know when I sat on the board, I was told about a program that was going to be happening where there's going to be someone that's going to be dispatched to situations like this so that they're handled properly. This child is 10 years old. He's nonverbal. First of all, the police officer should approach the mother and spoke to them to make sure the situation was proper. You do not know unless you're a mother that has a child or a father that has a child or a parent period that has a child with autism, how to interfere in that. This child is now had even more added trauma because they were handcuffed. That's on the video. That's another reason why we're here. A 10-year-old autistic, nonverbal child was handcuffed by the police, and you know that's an unfortunate situation. So she went and did the proper protocol. She spoke, and what she stated was that, it was stated that, it was understood that how the process happened was not the best way it should be handled, and they were offered a gift. One, we think that's disrespectful. And two, what we want out of this situation is some sort of understanding and proactive approach moving forward in these situations. Because at the end of the day, this child has been traumatized, and then they were truly, a person in this situation, you don't necessarily know what's going on with these documents. If there's not someone that can thoroughly explain, she felt that she had to sign those documents to bring to the hospital. Then, that's another situation. The child's blood was drawn. There's a lot of discrepancies in this situation, but we're starting with you first because the police are paid and employed by the city of New Bern. So, you know, there needs to be further conversation. I don't know if she has obtained an attorney or not. I know that once that happens, she no longer speaks to you. She'll speak, the attorney will speak to Scott Davis. But there needs to be more than apology. The video needs to come out expeditiously, but at the end of the day, no 10-year-old child should be handcuffed. And if the person on the phone let the dispatcher know that the child was autistic, that should have been relayed to the police officer so that they had a better understanding on how to approach the situation. She is in shambles. The family is in shambles. The community is out here to support because obviously, social media. We're going to make sure we get things out. We come in peace, but we come to get understanding on why this situation happened and what is going to be in place if this happens again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you going to be able to answer her or do you have to wait until the meeting?
We're not going to, there's a pending investigation, so we're not going to be able to make any comments. Next up is Cherie Strayhorn. Cherie Strayhorn?
She's on, here.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, that's all the petition of citizens. Moving on to the consent agenda. Does the board have an opportunity to look at the consent agenda?
Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as is.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing done. Let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Creel.
Alderman Creel?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. Motion carries. Item number 10 is to conduct the public hearing and consider adopting an ordinance amending Sections 15, 416, 15, 417, and 15, 423D of the land use ordinance. Ms. Room.
Hi, thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor and Board. This evening, we have before you a proposed small text amendment package that would impact Sections 15-416, 15-417, and Section 15-423D of our land use ordinance. And so, in plain English, what's being requested is 15-416 governs the determination of a front setback in our historic district, and this section was inadvertently left out in December when we did a larger package of legislative amendments to the entire ordinance for consistency with the updated state statutes. And the language is being requested to go back in slightly modified from the legacy language. It modifies how you calculate that front setback rather than doing it on contributing structures, which are historic. The HPC and the Planning and Zoning Board have recommended a small modification to just using adjacent structures instead. No other changes being proposed there from what existed until December. In Section 15-417, that's our section that governed parking standards in the historic district. That is just a replacement of what was inadvertently left out during that amendment package in December. And then, Section 15-423, that governs procedures, and that is just correcting a typographical error that was made during that update. It currently reads 170V, and of course, it should reference 160V, which is a reference to the state statutes. These text amendments are coming recommended to you from both the Historic Preservation Commission as well as the Planning and Zoning Board. Unanimously, they both reviewed the text amendment package at their meetings in July, and they found to be, have been found to be reasonable and in the public interest and generally consistent with all city adopted plans. Thank you.
Does the board have questions before we open the public hearing? Okay, at this time, I will open the public hearing for item number 10. If anyone would like to come speak on this item, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Since no one's coming forth, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is now closed. What is the pleasure of the board on item number 10?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt an ordinance amending Sections 15-416, 15-417, and 15-423D of the land use ordinance.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance amendment. Any further discussion? Hearing done. Let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Royal.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Creel?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Item number 11, conduct a public hearing on financing of the construction of the Stanley White Recreation Center. Ms. Ostrom?
North Carolina General Statute 160A-20 requires a public hearing when local governments intend to finance real property. At the July 11th Board meeting, a resolution was adopted to call for a public hearing on the proposed financing for the construction of the Stanley White Rec Center in the amount of up to $10 million. The installment finance agreement is anticipated to consist of two components, a long-term portion of $6.5 million and a shorter term of $3.5 million for cash flow purposes due to the lag of FEMA reimbursements. I ask that we conduct a public hearing.
Does the board have questions for Ms. Ostrom before we open the public hearing? Hearing done. At this time, I will open a public hearing on item number 11, which is the financing of the construction of the Stanley White Recreation Center. Anybody has any comments, feel free to come forward. State your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. James O. Woods, Jr., 1903, Country Club Road, New Bern, North Carolina. I just want clarification. This is in, the loan is something other besides the money that's already been put aside for the Stanley White Recreation Center. Is that correct?
This is to talk about financing part of that to reimburse ourselves with the funding that we would receive back from FEMA. Is that correct, at this time? That's correct.
So, the loan is to do before we get the FEMA, while we're waiting on the FEMA money?
That's correct. It takes a while to get the reimbursements from FEMA, so that's why we're getting the loan for up to that amount. Once we submit that information to FEMA, it could take literally up to six months to get that back. So we need to make sure that we continue to be liquid and fluid with our accounting.
Okay, so will the $10 million be enough? Because I've heard a number from this board of $13 million set aside for the building of Stanley White. Now, if we have to get a loan to continue that we're, our fluidity, is that $13 million already set aside? Or is this $10 million part of that $13 million?
The $10 million is part of that $13 million. And so, we have, the board has approved the project and contracted $13.1 million for the Stanley White Recreation Center project, and that's the amount of funds that are going to be spent on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is now closed. What's the pleasure of the board on item number 11? Actually, is there anything we need to do? Just a public hearing.
Just hold a public hearing.
Okay, all right. We'll move on to item number 12. Thank you. Number 12 is to consider adopting a resolution approving the preliminary findings for the financing of the Stanley White Recreation Center and authorizing the filing of an application with the LGC. Ms. Ostrom?
So, DAVM for Public Finance presented financing options at the July 11th Board meeting for the Stanley White Rec Center, the sewer improvement projects, and the vehicles and equipment purchases. The next two items, number 12 and number 13, are required and consist of a resolution authorizing the submission of an application to the LGC and solicitation of financing proposals from lending institutions. The LGC will consider approval of the application at its September meeting. Item number 12 is for the Stanley White Rec Center, and I'm not sure if you can combine those, but number 13 is for the sewer improvement projects.
So, Board, as long as it's unanimous, we could combine 12 and 13 if you would like to do so. It's the pleasure of the board.
Mayor will make a motion to adopt the resolution approving the preliminary findings for the financing of the Stanley White Recreation Center and authorizing the filing of an application with the local government commission and adopting a resolution approving the preliminary findings for financing of sewer improvements and authorizing the filing of an application with the local government commission.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done. Let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Astor.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Creel?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Item number 14, consider adopting a resolution approving a letter of engagement for bond council services with Womble Bond Dickinson LLP. Ms. Ostrom?
As you are aware, the city is pursuing issuance of revenue bonds and installment financings for the sewer infrastructure projects, the Stanley White Rec Center project, and the capital purchases of vehicle and equipment. The city has previously engaged with Womble, Carlisle, Sandridge, and Rice LLP in October 2012, which is now Womble Bond Dickinson LLP for bond council services. An updated letter of engagement is presented to the board for necessary services related to the debt authorizations and issuance processes. This is a fee-based service, and if you notice at the bottom of the agenda item cover sheet, the total cost for their services related to these three financing engagements is not to exceed $80,000. These fees will be included in the loan.
Does the board have questions on item number 14?
I'll make a motion, Mayor, that we adopt a resolution approving a letter of engagement for bond council services with Womble Bond Dickinson LLP.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done. Let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Kenzie.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Creel?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Item number 15 is a presentation on new utility billing format. I believe Charlie Bouchard is going to make this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Alderman. I bring you good news tonight, something I'm very excited about, something staff's very excited about. Bear with me as I go back and forth between my glasses and the screen. You can't see what's up close and what's far away at the same time. But I'd like to show you what staff has done regarding our utility bill format and walk you through what it looks like, what you're seeing on the screen right now. In general, it's very, very hard to read. It's hard to pick out each service as used by the consumer. And also, the graphs that are there, they're not validated. We're not real sure exactly how the printer is getting this information, so it's always been a question in my mind. I've seen some that are off from time to time, and I don't know if it really brings any value to the utility bill as it's been presented. Going forward, we've redesigned a new utility billing format, which I think immediately jumps out with noticeable differences. If I can scroll this down.
Right arrow?
The right arrow? I'll scroll down. I guess I can't get it all on the same page.
No, that was the PDF.
Okay.
Do you want to try the PowerPoint?
What's that?
Do you want to try the PowerPoint instead?
If you'd like. I can see it all at one time here. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So, in this PowerPoint, not everything transferred quite exactly the way it should in the conversion from the PDF, but in that first top where the light bulb is, it would say electricity, and then area lights, and whatever electric services you have, and the amount. And the point is that all your utility services, all your enterprise service funds, services that you receive from them are all summarized upfront, easy to read. People know what their cost is without having to go through the rest of the bill and sort it out. As you scroll through the rest of the bill with your eyes, you can pick up more details that are used to come up with the information in the top of the bill. This is the back of the bill, of the old bill. And I just wanted to point out here, as Sherry Benson would say, there's just too many words and nobody's going to read this. It has all of our information on it, but it's just way, way too busy, and nobody's reading it. So we reformatted the back of the utility bill, and all the same information that was on the old bill is here on the new bill. But we've modernized it with some icons that are recognizable today by our consumers. Hopefully, that's a lot easier to read and navigate, sign up for services, and see some of the details that may, they may want to be, they may be interested in. So, customers will begin seeing this new format for a bill after August 28. This is all possible through an upgrade to our new billing system. Not the new billing system, but an upgrade to our existing billing system, which includes all of our customer information system, all of our billing information, and all of our payments. We'll go live with this upgrade on August 28, barring no complications between now and then. But however, before we do that, we need to make some adjustments and fine tune this system before we go live with it. So, I'm planning to close our customer service operation for two days, Friday, August 25, and Monday, August 28. That'll give staff time to work Friday through the weekend and Monday and get the system up and ready to go live on August 29. And then, after that, those customers that are billed after August 29 will start receiving the new billing format. So it's something that staff has been working on for a very long time. I think it's long overdue. It's much easier to read for our customers. It's all possible now through our upgraded billing system, and I want to thank staff for all the hard work that they've spent on this.
Board have questions?
Charlie, I like the new design. I think it is more reader-friendly.
Yes.
I like it myself. But I have a question. The two days that your office is going to be closed, so if a customer's payment is due within those two days, how would that be treated? If they're not being, going to be able to visit office, correct?
Correct. Well, we will, we'll suspend disconnects for that week and for that time period if the bill is due. And we'll go out on social media as well as our automated voice messaging system, and we'll alert customers probably starting tomorrow to send out those messages that, hey, our payment office is going to be closed for those two days. And also, start notifying customers that they'll start receiving the new bills, and if they see a different-looking bill in the mail come September, that, don't be surprised, it's real. If you don't think it's real, call us and we'll validate it for you. So I hope to get out to, in the very near future, and start letting our customers know what's going on.
Thank you.
Charlie, will customers still be able to pay online or drop anything off in the drop box or at Walmart?
Yes, thank you for bringing that up. All of our customer service operations will still be going on during this period of time. We just cannot accommodate customers walking in and making payments. So all the payments can be processed electronically. You can drop them in the drop box. The drive-through will be closed, and then the front door will be closed, but we'll answer our phones, we'll respond to emails. If somebody really needs to come in and walk through an application, we'll let them in the front door and we'll work with them on a one-on-one basis. But all the operations should be relatively normal other than really the catch is taking cash payments during that period of time. That really trips us up.
Charlie, I think all the board members received an email from a resident late last week. The resident made a suggestion that with the change of the format of the billing, that this- this might be a good opportunity to get additional word out about the loan management program for the electric utility. I don't know whether that suggestion had been, had made it to you or not.
Yes, sir.
And I'm sure you have a program in place educating the public about it, but just passing that suggestion on to you that, that maybe in addition to this, that something could be put out, just reminding people that that program is available and the benefits of maybe getting involved in it.
Yes, sir. We gave that some forethought during the design process, and I'll try to explain it to you. See where the word "new format" is on the slide? That space has been reserved for campaigns, or what I would call flavor-of-the-day information that the utility or the city may want to put out on a regular basis and then change it. We have the ability to change that often. And then there's another area at the top of the bill that has been reserved for special information, if you're on pay-as-you-go, if you had a bank draft. So, there is some space reserved on that bill that staff can put updated information in, a campaign for load management and education information, so we can, we can update and change that as the need exists and as our customers give us feedback. So, there is some space there to do that.
Charlie, I appreciate the changes, something we talked about probably eight years ago, to be honest with you. Oftentimes, I'm sure the board probably gets comments from citizens about how much more their bill is versus their friend, and their friend is on Duke, and Duke is only electricity, and we obviously have other services. So, hopefully, this will help clarify that a little bit more, so when folks are comparing their City of New Bern bill with Duke, they will look at the electricity, they'll look at the light bulb section, because that's really what they need to compare.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any questions?
Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you.
It's good, Charlie.
All right. Item number sixteen is consider adopting a resolution authorizing the city managers to execute a contract with Barnhill Construction for the Racetrack Road Project. Mr. Childs.
Good evening, Mayor, Board. This is kind of a culmination project of many things, one being the, in 2020, we did a feasibility study of an appropriate widening to accommodate both vehicles and pedestrian movement along Racetrack Road, and that resulted in the selection of those currently on the plans. It also included a finding in a 2019 drainage study of a culvert that's also on Racetrack Road that we've incorporated into this project. So, as we had all the plans finally done, taken into consideration the drainage study and the feasibility study, we bid this out on June 27th. We only had one bidder at that opening, so we went back out, re-advertised at a July 18th opening. We had two bidders. One bid was considered non-responsive, and the other bid was by Barnhill Contracting. The total of the bid was one million, three thousand, seven hundred, three dollars and forty cents. We're making a recommendation to the board to approve the city manager executing on behalf of the city all contract documents and any change orders for the Racetrack Road widening project.
Board have questions?
If I have questions, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the city manager to execute the Barnhill Construction, Contracting for the Racetrack Road project.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Before we vote on that, if I could just ask George a question. George, I mean, the reconstruction of the roadway, it's been widened by additional six feet?
Correct. But from Elizabeth Avenue north to the railroad tracks, we're going to go from a 22-foot road currently to a 28-foot road. There are currently two 11-foot lanes. What we're going to do is actually narrow the lane travel width down to 10 with the striping to actually accommodate some slower speeds, we hope, and it'll also allow for a wider paved shoulder for pedestrians. We do realize that we have school bus activity on that road, they'll need to pass, so we do want to keep the traffic to, speed to a minimum with the narrow lanes.
So, I think you just really answered my question. The, there will be a dedicated pedestrian side lane.
We're going to have wider paved shoulders. This is not quite wide enough to call it dedicated pedestrian. Yes, that was our goal within the roadside ditches that are there, without having to go into great infrastructure changes on that roadway.
And will that be delineated clearly with line striking?
With thermals, yes, sir. Thermals striking will be on that.
Okay.
And then, and then north of the railroad tracks, we're just going to be resurfacing from there to Neuse Boulevard. It will not get wide in that section, so along the residential section back towards Elizabeth will be wider.
How soon will the DOT start to work with the intersection coming off of Neuse Boulevard to exit onto Racetrack Road? Have you heard anything about that?
We have seen concept plans. I don't believe it's included in the funding cycle right now, but there are concept plans of some addressing that whole roadway right there.
Alderman Brinson, do you have any updates on that from the MPO?
I do not.
Okay.
It hasn't been discussed yet, but I was going to ask a question.
Sure.
On this project, have they discussed if they're going to have a partial closure or a full closure?
We will have a better idea of how the traffic control will be patterned once we get into discussions closer to setting a notice-proceed date. And there is included in that contract, if you look at the line items for the base bid, alternate one and two, there's considerable amount of money for traffic control, and there are considered specifications in the standards for how they do the traffic control that applies by DOT standards.
Just one last point. I believe this is being paid for with Alderman Kinsey's ARP funding allocation.
That is correct.
Okay.
Because this is three entrances and back and two coming off of Racetrack Road. It's the new Derby Park Boulevard, the old Derby Park, and all, no, it's four, I think. Then coming off of Colony Drive.
Correct.
And then coming off Elizabeth Avenue.
Correct.
So, I guess they would be able to determine which flow, I guess, the flow of traffic from the backside of Derby Park.
Correct. And we've, we've already had upfront conversations with the contractor and the realization of the school schedule and the bus schedules. I don't believe we'll need full closures on a certain part of Elizabeth up until we get to upgrading the culverts, because in the culvert upgrade, we're going from a single 36 to a double, so we're going to have to open cut that road. There may be a full closure at that time. And then we have a thickened area of asphalt directly in front of the current concrete plant where they come in and out of that road, which has degraded the road base a little bit. So, we've got some sections we're going to have to work around. Fortunately, they're further north of all of the residential, so we can divert traffic into other areas when we get to that point, but hopefully, there'll be shortened closures.
Now, when you say the culvert, is that the one that's closer to the Reddymix Plant?
Yes, it's the one right there, cutting it a lift station with the ditch on either side that you see running to the east or a little bit to northeast.
What size are we looking, what size is there?
It's currently, it's currently a 36, and the plan's called to increase it to two 36-inch pipes. We'll be adding another 36-inch pipe.
So, we're going to run two instead of one?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion in a second on the floor. If there's no more discussion, we'll have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bess.
Alderman Bess.
Yes.
Alderman Brinson.
Yes.
Alderman Creel.
Yes.
Alderman Royal.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Mayor Odom.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, George. Item number seventeen is to consider adopting a resolution authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract with Urban Design Ventures LLC for CDBG Consulting Services. Ms. Rude.
Thank you. Good evening again, Mayor and Board. Development Services is requesting adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract with Urban Design Ventures LLC, and this is for consulting services related to our community development block grant program. As is required under federal guidelines, on June 26th, the city publicly advertised for a request or proposals for these services for a period of five years. We received proposals from two firms on July 17th. These proposals were ranked by a review committee and were evaluated using outlined criteria contained in the RFP. Urban Design Ventures was the top-scoring firm, and this was based on related experience, familiarity with the City of New Bern, credentials of key personnel, and other qualifying factors outlined by the program. The length of the contract period allows for the development of the 2024 through the 2028 CDBG five-year consolidated plan, as well as consulting services for each subsequent annual plan as required by HUD. And those, of course, are the documents that support the implementation of the specific programs that tie back to the consolidated five-year plan. For community awareness, I'll mention the preparation and adoption of a consolidated plan is required to maintain eligibility in the CDBG program. This is the plan that is more technical than our annual plans that were presented to you several months ago, and this is designed to assess affordable housing options, community development needs, and other market conditions. Additionally, this five-year plan functions to assist in making data-driven and place-based investment decisions, in addition to facilitating community-wide dialogues for identifying priorities that align funding with programs. The planning process for the consolidated plan includes consultation, citizen participation, a more in-depth needs assessment for the city, which is related specifically to transportation needs, housing needs, services needed, and economic development, and also a market analysis on housing data. Whereas, our annual action plans provide those specific details and our actual plan for each year on how we implement the goals that are wider and broader in that five-year plan that includes more specific data. So, the costs associated with this contract are funded through CDBG, and they include the work on our consolidated plan, which will get started here shortly through our Community and Economic Development Office, the assessment that has to be done for fair housing, the work on each annual action plan for the subsequent four years, the required annual environmental review record, or the ERR, and the annual consolidated performance and evaluation report, which is required by the CDBG program and HUD. And so, it is respectfully requested you consider adoption of the enclosed resolution authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract with Urban Design Ventures LLC for the provision of these services.
Board have questions?
Yes, I do. Ms. Rude, now, does this company, will this company also be managing the CDBG funds for our community housing that I thought funding was going to go to the three, two nonprofit organizations that has nothing to do with this?
So, that is included in our annual action plan that was adopted, and yes, this firm has assisted us with enrolling that and managing that program, but this plan, this contract is going to start our new fiscal year for the CDBG program, runs a little different than our municipal fiscal year, but it is a group that we have worked with before, and staff is recommending that we work with them again. We have been pleased with them.
Okay. We established funding, I think it was, I can't remember the amount that we established funding to go to the nonprofit organizations.
Yes, in the annual action plan, yes.
Okay, right. So, though that funding is still available for this, for the citizens that signed up requesting repairs to be made to their homes?
Yes, ma'am, and similar programs could be supported again as we move forward in the new plan as well.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
One question. This consultant will be working directly with just the CDBG or Development Services or with the economic development, community and economic development?
Yes, they'll be working, they'll be working with both Chris and Tiaja, and they will be providing the oversight and leading the facilitation of that five-year plan, because our five-year plan is about to expire, and we need to have an up-to-date five-year plan every year, which sets really broad goals. So, Dee and Chris in our office will work with this consultant to do the community engagement and take the data from all of these required pieces that I listed out that this will fund and use it to set the broad goals, which in turn will set kind of the way we match programs that go into the annual action plan that we bring before this board every year to approve, which includes the programs like Alderman Bess just mentioned and some other renovations were in the last one that you approved in May. And so, they all work together, just like a land use plan, where the larger goals go in the consolidated plan, is what they call it in this case. And then, they are matched to our actual actions that go in that annual action plan every year. So, they will be leading this function and helping our staff get this accomplished to meet the HUD guidelines. And this plan is a little more robust, complicated, and technical than the ones that we do every year, which is why it requires some more technical expertise and assistance.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, another question. Now, we have seven applicants already. Now, are they still going to be the seven priority applicants that was approved before for the CDBG funding, or is this urban design going to go in and make?
So, this is a firm that we're using for continuity. They have worked with the past plans. Any commitments we've made to citizens or programs that are already established, we will continue and move forward until they're completed.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Jessica, I know this is more of a broad-based five-year plan, but this would come before this board for approval, correct?
Yes, the five-year plan will come before this board, as well as, of course, each annual action plan that is connected, so for the next five years, like we do every year.
The only comment that I would have is, I would recommend that they work with this board, especially the aldermen that represent the areas that the CDBG fund is utilized in, to make sure that they have input along the way, so we don't see this plan for the first time once it's been prepared. Yes, we get that there's community input, but it's important that the board members have input as well, so we don't end up with bus shelters and things in places that we don't need, as an example.
I absolutely welcome the engagement.
It's a pleasure of the board on item number seventeen.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract with Urban Design Ventures LLC for CDBG Consulting Services.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I have a roll call, starting with Alderman Brinson.
Alderman Brinson.
Yes.
Alderman Creel.
Yes.
Alderman Royal.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Alderman Bess.
Yes.
Mayor Odom.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Item number eighteen is to consider adopting a resolution accepting the transfer of 908, 910, and 914 Bloomfield Street from the Redevelopment Commission to the City of New Bern and reallocating funding to the city for a health and wellness center. Mr. Williams.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. As you all know, previously, the board had allocated or conveyed 908 Bloomfield to the Redevelopment Commission in addition to the allocated funds of $350,000. Now, after they considered the cost that was associated with remodeling that and bringing that up to the standards that were required to include ADA standards, they realized that it would be more feasible for them to start with a new building, so they purchased 910 and 914 Bloomfield to have that for the whole area for the Health and Wellness Center. Once they established that, they got in touch with some of their partners and stakeholders, and after reviewing all the processes associated with creating a health, health center, they felt that it was more feasible for the city to, or more efficient for the city to pursue the project, so they're asking to convey that property back over to us so that we can handle that.
Does the board have questions?
I do.
Sure.
How did that happen like that, with them knowing that they couldn't do that, you know? And I don't know the pleasure of the board, if they're interested in getting in that type of business.
I believe, from a legal perspective, the Redevelopment Commission has learned throughout their tenure that there's things that they can't and cannot do according to statute. I think they went in with the intentions on operating this and leasing it out like they had the intentions of building houses and leasing those out, and then the attorney made them aware that they could not do that. And then, when you get to, and correct me if I'm wrong, staff, when you get to the bidding process for how this would go out for bid, the Redevelopment Commission process for how this would go out for bid, the Redevelopment Commission doesn't really have that knowledge or expertise, so they were looking to the city to do that anyway. So, essentially, I think that's the reason why we're where we are now. Comments that I made last time this came up is, I'm certainly not interested in the City of New Bern getting into the operation of a health and wellness center. I do know that there's a lot of work that's been put behind it. I had a meeting with Reggie Jones, some folks from North Carolina Central University. Mr. Williams was there, Mr. Hughes was there, and they have the ability to help with staffing. They have some funding grant opportunities as well. So, I think this is going to end up being a pretty good partnership once all the details get ironed out. But we're to that point that the city is essentially, we've got to take the baton and run with it now. The Redevelopment Commission has done everything that they can legally do under their purview. Staff, is that a fair assessment?
That's correct, and it's not the intention of the city to operate the wellness center. The goal would be to lease it out to another entity to handle that.
Okay. Any more questions?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution accepting the transfer of 908, 910, and 914 Bloomfield Street from the Redevelopment Commission to the City of New Bern and reallocating funding to the city for a health and wellness center.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Pril.
Alderman Pril?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Item number nineteen.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
But before we leave that, do we need to give, now give, staff direction on what to do with that?
Staff, do you need direction on what to do with that?
I think we're pretty clear on what we need to do, and we're ready to, we're ready to jump on that.
Okay.
Good question, though. Didn't want to leave them hanging. All right, item number nineteen, consider adopting a resolution authorizing the execution of an offer to purchase and contract with Sanderson Holdings LLC for the purchase of 5 Murray Street, tax parcel ID 8006178. Mr. Williams?
Yes, sir. The Dustin Field Stormwater Enhancement Project, we originally had a design that was done on these, to create this series of inner connected stormwater wetland areas, which is similar to the Jack Smith Creek Stormwater Project that we have. And when the design came out, it actually had four pieces of, four parcels in it that we did not have access to at the time. So, we went back in, and three of those parcels were air properties that we weren't not able to get, and the fourth was the Sanderson property here. And when they did the redesign, the Sanderson property was included within that, and we went out to acquire that piece of property, and that's what, this is the piece of property that would give us all the area that we need to start the phases two and three of the stormwater project.
Board have questions?
Yes, Mark, but where exactly, I know you said the Biddle Street Stormwater Pond, but is that the properties on the, if you're in front of the Biddle Street, is that the properties on the right side of that pond? Is that the properties you're speaking of? Because I was trying to, and there's not a map, and he's showing where the property's located.
Alderman Best, this property questions across the street between Wood Cemetery. I'm just on the backside of that. And the three other properties that Mr. Williams was referring to that we did not have access to, it was on that following street, and I'm sorry, I don't have the name of that street.
Yeah.
And we had talked about this parcel itself. It was contingent upon getting that parcel on whether or not we would get a loan. It was a multimillion-dollar loan. We did, I'm sorry, multimillion-dollar grant. We did receive that grant, so that pushed us to acquire this property for this project.
Thank you.
Board have questions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the execution of an offer to purchase and contract with Sanderson Holdings LLC for the purchase of 5 Murray Street, tax parcel ID 8-006-178.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Royal.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Pril?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Item number twenty, acceptance of tax collector's annual settlements for tax years 2020, 2021, and 2022. Ms. Ostrom?
Good evening again. North Carolina General Statute 105-373 requires the tax collector to provide the governing board with an annual settlement of property taxes. The settlements were received from the Craven County Tax Collector, but two years were not submitted to the board. It is requested that the board make a motion to accept the prior years for 2020 and 2021, and then the current 2022 settlements. You will find these settlements in your packet.
Board have questions?
Yes, I do. Ms. Ostrom, is there a reason why we have three years of settlements that wasn't presented to this board?
We received them, reconciled them, we just did not realize that that was a requirement to submit them to the board.
So, thank you.
So, and also to Alan, that as we were looking at this, the clerk let us know about this, and then the finance director did reject the school's government to verify whether or not it would be acceptable to lump all these three years into a request for the board to consider.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Yes, I saw the various totals for each year, but what is the collective total, please?
The collective total?
For those three years?
For the tax?
The total, yes.
I can email that to you later, I can just add up the.
Okay.
May I make a motion that we accept the tax collector's annual settlement for the tax years 2020, 21, and 22?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a, actually, we can do a voice vote. All those in favor say aye. Any aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number twenty-one, consider adopting an ordinance amending the schedule of fees and charges. Ms. Ostrom?
The Fire Department has requested to amend the fiscal year 23, 24 fee schedule to reflect the following changes. An increase, the fine for working without a permit from $50 to $75, plus the cost of the permit. To increase the fine for failure to obtain final inspection from $100 to $150. And increase the life safety violation for the first offense from $100 to $150. And specify the storage tank installation removal piping abandonment fee of $125 per tank.
Does the board have questions?
Jonathan, are these fees in line with what other departments are doing?
Yes, sir, and it's also in line with some of our code ordinances that these fees have gotten outlin' with.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
May I like to make a motion that we consider adopting an ordinance amending the schedule of fees and charges for the Fire Department?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I just have one question, I guess it's probably for Foster. Is there a reason why the timing on this is now, since we had adopted the fee schedule previously?
Yes, sir. In my conversations with the Fire Department, they thought they had to amend these changes as part of the budget process, and when we looked to verify, they had not been included. So, that's why we're bringing these up now. They really wanted to have these included to be able to charge appropriately.
Those, they're fairly small amounts, I'm assuming it's not impacting the budget very much.
That's correct.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Astor.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Pril?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Item number twenty-two, consider adopting an ordinance amending the 2019 Electric Improvements Project Fund. Ms. Ostrom?
The 2019 Electric Improvement Projects Fund was established for the replacement of a transformer and future substation improvements necessary for system reliability due to the growth of the city. Several NC DOT projects were added in the amount of 2.3 million in August of 2020. These projects are reimbursed by NC DOT. Additionally, activities for the Golden Leaf and North Carolina DEQ grants were allocated in this fund in the amount of 481,542. This ordinance amendment increases appropriations by $3 million for additional costs related to the NC DOT utility relocation projects. Project costs are billed and reimbursed by NC DOT. Revenues generated from the NC DOT project will fund the $500,000 transfer to the 2021 Electric System Capacity Improvement Project Fund for efforts to continue towards making ready the construction of the new substation and interconnections to the bulk electric system and electric distribution system. The revenues were increased by 3.5 million for other reimbursements from the NC DOT. This amendment brings the total life of the project fund to $7,796,173.
So, just to clarify, are we combining twenty-one, I meant twenty-two and twenty-three? Is that? Because I'm looking at the attachment, the ordinance that is in the project fund for 2019, it's 3 million and 3 million. And then, we got this addition, this number, item number twenty-two?
Oh, I'm sorry. So, the, there is a corrected ordinance presented to you to include the $500,000. The original ordinance had just 3 million, and then, in front of you, you should have one for 3.5 million.
Okay, so we can combine twenty-two and twenty-three of this unanimous board?
Yeah, twenty-three would be acknowledging the $500,000 transfer into the 2021 Electric Capacity Improvement Project Fund.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the ordinance amending the 2019 Electric Improvement Project Fund as well as adopting an ordinance amending the 2021 Electric System Capacity Improvement Project Fund.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Best.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Pril?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey? Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Item number twenty-four, consider adopting an ordinance amending the 2021 Make Ready Public Infrastructure for Broadband Service Providers Project Fund. Ms. Ostrom?
Sure. So, the 2021 Make Ready Public Infrastructure for Broadband Services Project Fund was established with an initial budget of 7.2 million with plans to fund the project by reimbursements from the broadband service providers. The project was initially funded with a total of $3,650,000 in transfers from the operating funds, with 3 million from electric, 20,000 from water fund, 20,000 from sewer fund, and 25,000 from the general fund. Additionally, other revenue totaling over $225,000 to date includes fees and charges to the broadband service providers for permit engineering and pole inspection fees as well as construction costs. This ordinance amendment decreases broadband infrastructure appropriations by $4,135,000. Revenue from broadband service providers reimbursements is decreased by the same amount. Recently, the finance, I and the utilities director met to discuss various capital projects, and upon reviewing the project activity, it was decided that the project would not likely need additional funding and should remain at the current funded amount of $3,650,000, resulting in a reduction of the original budget in the amount of $4,135,000.
Does the board have questions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt an ordinance amending the 2021 Make Ready Public Infrastructure for Broadband Service Providers Project Fund.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Brinson.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Pril?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey? Alderman Best?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries, thank you. Kim, moving on to item number twenty-five, appointments. Alderman Kinsey stepped out, but he has one for the planning and zoning. And then, board, we have the two for the Redevelopment Commission. One is for Commissioner Tabari Wallace, who does seek to be reappointed, and the second is for Commissioner Theresa Lee, and she does not wish to be reappointed. So, I guess we'll handle the one for, the seat for Commissioner Wallace first if there's a motion to reappoint him or someone else.
I make a motion that we reappoint Mr. Wallace to the Redevelopment Commission Board.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to reappoint Commissioner Wallace to the Redevelopment Commission. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Any aye? Any opposed? Mr. Wallace is reappointed as far as the open seat. We had three submissions, Mr. Jimmy Dillahunt, Mr. James Woods, Ms. Carol Beckton. Seems like this ballot procedure seems to be working out pretty well, since we have multiple folks that would like to go into one seat. So, if the board is not opposed, you have a ballot in front of you. If not, you can go a different route if someone would like to try something different. Okay? Mr. Williams will collect those. Mr. Kinsey has filled his out, but he didn't sign it, so just for the record, I'm handing you his. While they're tallying that up, I do not see any other appointments, just seeing what have one that I may have missed. All right. We'll move on to, while they're tallying it up, attorney's report?
Nothing reported tonight, Mayor.
City manager's report?
Got a few things to give you an update on. First of all, we had the groundbreaking for the Stanley White Recreation Center project this Friday. This past Friday, we had approximately 200 people in attendance. It was a great crowd, great presentation. Parks and Recreation staff did a great job in also providing lunch for those participants. In approximately 15 months, we're going to have a state-of-the-art 35,000-square-foot recreation center that this entire city can be proud of. So, anticipate November or December of 2024 being able to have the ribbon cutting for that new facility. So, really excited about that. Great job to the staff, too. It was not the best weather, but they did a great job making sure we were all protected and had a good lunch as well, so thank you. So, our strategic planning is getting ready to kick off. I'm going to need a motion for the date, time, and location for our first session. We're proposing Wednesday, August 30th, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and Thursday, August 31st, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon at the Pleasant Hill Community Center.
So, second?
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I assume we'll have, we won't be live, but we'll be able to record.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, all those in favor say aye. Any aye? Any opposed? There you go.
Okay. City Hall update, we met with our contractors today to determine exactly what was left on the project. Toward the end of this month, the contractors are going to install the water sewer connection to tie the restrooms and things in. We anticipate by mid to late September, as of right now, getting access to the elevator edition.
So, the second meeting in October, we should plan on?
I would like to, I would like to hope so, but unfortunately, every time I give them an update, it's been pushed back, and pushed back, and pushed back. So, we're hoping that in the month of September, we're going to be able to have that ribbon cutting and introduce folks to a elevator to City Hall.
Okay.
Next item I have is, we're getting ready to release a general survey through social media and the website for the Kefal Park project with the Old North State League Summer College Baseball League. The Old North State is, league is going to be coming to Kefal, into, I'm sorry, they're coming to the Omega Center on Monday, August 14th at 5:30 for a public meeting. At that time, they're going to do a PowerPoint presentation, and they're going to give the public an opportunity to ask any questions that they may have regarding their project. We'll compile that information and also information from the survey and present that to the governing board to further consider the request that the Old North present that to the governing board to further consider the request that the Old North State League had to lease Kafer Park.
Do you see a need for us advertising that as a meeting, if we have a quorum there where there could be some discussion amongst the board, or not?
How many would be interested in attending the meeting?
I'll probably be there.
Oh, yes, I will. I will as well.
I think I'll be out of town.
I'll stay back, so you don't have to do it.
So it looks like we have at least four, so, yes.
And only if you're going to discuss business, if you're going to show up, it's perfectly fine.
But if any one of, just to clarify, if any one of us chimes in and says something, is that considered?
I would just avoid discussing city business. But if that's a worry, that city business might come up, then always err on the side of caution and call your meeting, if you're going to have a quorum.
Okay. We just won't discuss it. We'll listen, how about that?
That would be my advice.
Okay. Because I don't want to call for a meeting, and then we only have three people show up, or four people show up, and it goes on the record that we have three people that didn't attend, because I don't want it to look bad on anybody. So we'll just, the four that will be there, we'll just listen.
Refraining from talking from business.
All right.
What was that? Refraining from discussing city business.
Okay. Next item is the Finance Department received the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Government Financial, Finance Officers Association. The city last received this award for the 2018 audit, so congratulations to Kim and the finance staff. Great job. We like seeing awards. Also, we talked at the last meeting about an audit committee. Last year, we had an audit committee, and so I believe at the last meeting, Alderman Brinson, Alderman Royal had an interest, and the mayor made the comment that if anyone else had an interest in being on that committee, he would step aside, and Alderman Kinsey and Alderman Prill were not in attendance at that meeting, so we wanted to see if anyone else would like to participate.
Alderman Kinsey was not interested, and Alderman Prill said if no one else wanted to do it, then he would do it. Is that?
Yeah, I mean, if anybody else has a burning desire, please step in.
All right.
All right, and so the plan is to hold a meeting next week, so the clerk is currently working on schedules, and so she'll be reaching out and letting everyone know when that meeting will be. And the last thing I have is a reminder that we have a footloose on the new summer concert this Friday night at 6:30 at Union Point Park. We've got landslide a tribute to Fleetwood Mac. We should have a large crowd for that event. That's all I have tonight, sir.
All right.
Sir, excuse me, mayor, when did you say the meeting for the Old North?
That's going to be Monday, August 14th, at 5:30 p.m. And we'll send some information out to everyone, to make sure you're aware.
Do you have the tallies from the appointment?
Yes, it's unanimous, seven for Jimmy Dillahunt.
Okay. Mr. Jimmy Dillahunt is thereby the new commissioner for the Redevelopment Commission.
Did we still want a motion, though?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Sorry, can I give?
I make a motion that we appoint Jimmy Dillahunt to Redevelopment Commission.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? I would just say that out of the three names that were submitted, I would have been absolutely comfortable with any of the three. I think they all would have served very well, so let's keep, keep those, if they're still interested in serving, keep those in the hat for the next opening that we have. So, any further discussion? All those in favor of Mr. Jimmy Dillahunt, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There we go. Let's go on to new business. Alderman Brinson?
Yes, the only thing I have, Mr. Mayor, some of you may know that Optimum came in to Greenbrier to lay a new line and.
Oh, we know. A few of us.
Pretty much havoc in Pine Valley Drive, so I really wanted to thank George Childs and Avery Smith, and particularly Travis Oakley for taking care of that. There was actually one address that they cut both their electric, water, internet, and sewer, just to cut them off. So it was a mess out there, but particularly heard a lot of good things about Travis Oakley out there, so I wanted to pass my thanks in a public forum for taking care of that. That's all I got.
Alderman Best?
Yes, I just want to thank Mr. Childs and Avery Smith for, there was a lot of much-needed cleanup within Ward Five, and they have done a tremendous job in cleaning up some of the areas. I received phone calls from citizens thanking, thanking me and the city for finally getting rid of a lot of debris and trash within certain areas of Ward Five. Also, Foster, I just wanted to mention to you and Assistant City Manager Williams, I know y'all are, actually have already contacted, your department has, and managers, and supervisors, whatever, about keeping our employees out of this excessive heat and taking more breaks than normal, because it's really been hot, and we've got a lot of hot weather coming. And that is it.
Alderman Kinsey, any new business?
Oh, yes, sir, it is. I went to a conference last week, BMO, in Rocky Mount, and they was speaking on term of, let's see here, talking about, I called this manager who was sharing with him about consultants, and the information that your consultant brings back from Raleigh to share with you, to see where you are, and some of the things that has been passed here lately, was the water and utilities and those sort of things there. So we're pretty much on a lot of those things, and a lot of small cities was there that was talking about, they don't get the services that large cities get. And so I thought of chiming in and say, well, if you join the local governments, that you can actually get those services, or use the league to get some of those services. Some cities, that was their population was 500 and on up. And so I learned a little bit about that there, and I was so glad that, to know that the city of New Bern is pretty much on point. We use the league a lot for different things that we encounter when we have problems. So that's where I'm at there.
Okay. Is that all?
Yes, sir.
Alderman Astor?
I just wanted to ask the city manager, or maybe even Kim, where are we at on the bidding process for the Jones Street houses?
I think I can give you an update on that. Most recent conversation, Jordan Hughes was working on that, coming up with the, with the design, design of the buildings themselves. What the Redevelopment Commission had passed on were basically copies out of a book, and so there were going to be some copyright issues with that. So they basically have recreated that information, and they've also come up with the specs. So I don't know if the attorneys have reviewed that yet, but it should be about ready to go out for bidding.
Yes, sir, and it will be more likely privately negotiated. The campus idea has been abandoned. If you remember, there was an idea of having a common driveway in the backs, in the backs, and it was more of a three-unit complex in a campus, and that has been changed to where it would now be three single-family homes with three individual driveways. So each of those homes can be, be bid separately, through an informal process. That will save time and effort.
Okay, so, and how long do they have to go on bids for?
How long would that?
How long will the bidding process take?
Quickly. It's just a matter of locating. In fact, you created a good segue. If anyone's aware of contractors who might be interested in providing a bid, an estimate for those, let staff know, because what will happen is staff will reach out to as many contractors as they can locate in this area to request proposals to build each house, you know, one, two, or three.
I think, I think Kip probably has a list of contractors that has already asked about them, so.
Perfect. They're great.
Does someone need to contact Kip, or are you going to?
So I believe, I believe Jordan Hughes has been having conversations with Kip about that.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
All right, Alderman Royal?
Not tonight, please.
Alderman Prill?
I have nothing.
Just a couple, couple things for me. Could we get a update on all the FEMA reimbursements, whenever you have an opportunity to provide that for us? And then I just wanted to congratulate the board. We are exactly 51 weeks, so one week shy of one year for this board being in office, and barring somebody doesn't want to adjourn tonight, everything passed unanimously. So for a board to be together for a year with three brand-new members, and everything passed unanimously, I think that's a good sign that everybody's working well together. So, do we need a closed session?
No, sir, thank you.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn, and we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We adjourn.